Good morning. This is a special hearing of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. Today is November 29th, and we're in Santa Barbara. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of our Constitution. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Contreras, could you please give us a TV coverage announcement?
Thank you. The special hearing of November 29th, 2006, we televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, San Andres Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcasting is planning commission will be on Friday, December 1st, 2006, at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. For the roll call, Commissioner Boyson?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Smizer?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here. Thank you very much. And now we'll open public testimony. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on any item that's not on today's agenda? Please come forward. Commissioner Boyson, do we have any requests there in the box?
Nothing for public.
Nothing. Seeing no one rise, we'll go on to the minutes of December 1st and December 8th, or November. I'm just a month ahead. November 1st, what's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
November 1st? All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Contreras, would you call the rule for that one?
Mr. Boyson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
All right, and now the minutes of November 8th.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, and I have some comments after the second.
All right, fine. Do we have a second?
Well, I want to hear the comments first, but then I'll second.
There were some changes.
Pen and name changes?
Yeah.
All right. Do we still have a second? Conditional second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Contreras, could you please call the record? Oh, I'm sorry, let's hear the comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. On page 13, on the, one, two, three, four, five, sixth line in that first paragraph, I'm not sure why we have in Barcadero Municipal Improvement District unless they supply water. Is it Gleta Water District water? Who supplies the water here? Probably don't know, but it doesn't seem to me like it should be either or. I'm not sure why it's like that. Don't we know who the water provider is? Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I believe it's the Water District. Okay, so the other language should be stricken, okay. And then on pages 15 through 16, the spelling for the Manzanita is La Purissima, and it's P-U-R-I-S-S-I-M-A. So that's, those are changes that need to be made on page 15, 16, and 17, I believe. And then I think there's one typo. I don't see it someplace.
It's misspelled?
Yeah, it needs another S, and there needs to be an L.A. in front of it.
Oh, there's two S's?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay, I guess. And on page 10, on the fourth bullet from the bottom, there's a misspelling in the word first line. It's H-A-S, not A-H-S. Fourth bullet from the bottom, 10. Yeah, that's it. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smizer, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I don't.
All right, thank you. All right, and with that, Ms. Contreras, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
All right. And now we'll go on to consent items and procedure. Our first one is the Isla Vista Parking Lot.
Mr. Chair, before we go to the consent agenda, if I could just go over a few changes to the agenda before you today?
All right.
And then just highlight a couple of things on the projection report. I know this is a special hearing. We don't usually do that, but there are a couple changes or things I wanted to just remind the commission about. With respect to the agenda today, your agenda has gotten significantly shorter because the Isla Vista Master Plan Adoption, Item Number Four, is being dropped from this agenda. And I think Mr. Goldstein would like to talk about a future date for consideration of that this morning, if that's possible with the commission. And then, Item Number Two, the Capone Appeal of the Gabbert Driveway is also proposed to be dropped. And I see that Mr. Fox is here, and will probably want to speak on that when we get to that item. So the only items that your commission has remaining on the agenda is the Isla Vista Parking Lot Consent Item, the Gernert Commercial Horse Boarding Operation, and the Ad Hoc Agricultural Housing Update. And that item we're proposing to move to the beginning of the agenda.
Okay.
So, number of changes that'll result, I think, in a fairly short day today.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Black, I have some concern about moving the Item Number Three to the up front. And the reason I have a concern is that when we published this agenda, people looked at the agenda, and they said, "Oh, it's Item Number Three. I can plan my day." And now we're making changes without letting the public aware. Some may have not been able to be here at whatever time we're going to see it if it's moved. And, you know, this is about the public. It's not about convenience to us, or I'm not sure what the circumstances for moving are. But obviously, you've got lots of staff here. They were informed. And I understand a few community members were informed. I wasn't informed. Nobody told me. If I'd known last week or sometime, I would have put the word out too. But I just feel that if this is a public process, then we need to keep the public in the process. And I think that by rearranging all this at the last moment, that we take the public out of the process, and we do it to our benefit rather than to theirs. That's my comment. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think, yes, Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Chair, I have a similar concern to express as Commissioner Brown, and I have spoken previously with staff and Ms. Black about this. But on Monday, late in the day, we were informed that the Isla Vista Master Plan would not be discussed at what essentially was a meeting established for the purpose of talking about it. And I make this plea on behalf of the commission as well as the public. When there is a matter set of this importance particularly, but any matter that's set on our agenda, I think it should be very rare and unusual that we take it off the agenda. If one department or another is not prepared, they can come to the commission at that time and say so. But to remove it from the agenda altogether, and to be arbitrary about when we hear matters of that importance, I think really undermines the validity of the agenda process. The whole idea is to let the public know in advance when we're going to discuss these matters, so they can prepare and participate. And right now, I suppose we're going to talk about a new date. But I caution staff not to set a date, not to notice a matter until and unless all necessary departments are advised and sign off. In this case, I think it was way too late to remove the matter from the agenda today.
All right, thank you. And I made one comment concerning Item Number Four, dropping it. It took a lot of reading. I don't know how much reading it took, but let me tell you, it took me two weeks to read that document, because I can't sit down and read for 20 hours at one time. So, and now I'm going to have to go give it another perusal when it comes up again, because I can't remember all those items. Commissioner Smizer?
Well, I get to have the job of defending staff, because I actually think this was a wise idea for staff to pull the item. Whenever you have a community plan process that has undergone the time that this community plan process has undergone, which is, I think we're going on maybe six years of work on this process, if there are, as the case in this particular case, and I'm sure staff will, or may or may not discuss this, but I know that the PAC, the Planning Advisory Committee, when the report was generated, and you really can only look at these reports, staff report, when it's complete and ready to go, indicated that they had some concerns. And the PAC is a bunch of community members that you want to have their opinions expressed in the way that they have come to a consensus in the community. And if they believe that the staff report does not reflect that, and that staff report is actually, the purpose of the report is to reflect the PAC's consensus as they have gone forward, the recommendations that they've gone forward, if for some reason that's missed the mark, I think that we do a disservice to the community bringing forward a staff report that really doesn't reflect that when you're going through this kind of a community plan process. So I think it was wise of staff to do this. I know that all of us read huge volumes of material on this, and I know that for us, catching up, and I apologize to the rest of my fellow commissioners, but I really do believe that as a third district commissioner, it was in the best interest of the constituents in the third district to have this matter postponed until the constituents who actually are responsible for this community plan could sign off on it. So I think that what we're going to end up having is a much more thorough report that includes the community's sentiments much more clearly than it is now. And I'm not, I'm not, so this is a supporting comment for staff, because I think they were being very, very sensitive to the community, to their fellow departments. And so I really think it was wise. Now, could we have done this earlier, earlier, earlier? Well, I think that in this case, you know, we were pushing staff to get a report out. And so, as I said, it's been six years. So the fact that the report came, and it didn't meet all of the expectations of the community, this is an unusual circumstance. It's been six years in the making. I think we can wait a couple months to make sure that the report accurately reflects the community sentiment. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Smizer. Good point. Commissioner Boyson, did you want to comment? No? All right, with that-
I'm staying out of this one.
All right, I think we'll fire all the employees, and now that'll take care of it. Or send them all to Aruba, one of the two. All right, let's see. Let's just continue. We know it's just a mental note that we need to be a little bit more concerned, and probably call all the commissioners and inform them as early as possible. And with that, let's get on to Isla Vista Parking Lot Project. Would you read that into the record, Ms. Contreras?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on the request of Don Grady, General Services Department, to consider Case Number 06GOV29, application filed on October 31st, 2006, for determination that the acquisition of real property for the purpose of developing a surface parking lot is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the coastal plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code Section 65402A.
All right, thank you very much. Any site visits or ex parte on this project? All right, and is Mr. Grady here? Do we have a representative from the General Services Department, in case there's a question?
Mr. Chair, Ron Carlantini is here, as well as the planner, Dan Gullett, if the commission has any questions. This is a consent agenda item, so we weren't proposing-
All right. Are there any questions concerning this at all? Sir, who are you?
Hi, Ron Carlantini, real estate manager for the county General Services Department, Support Services Division.
Okay, you're very fortunate. Nobody has any questions on this. This is a consent item, but thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening and hearing the item. Thank you.
Okay, this is a third district item. Open the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak on behalf of the public on this item? Commissioner Boyson, is there, are there any? No? Seeing no one rise, we'll come back to the commission, back to the staff. This is a third district item. Commissioner Smizer? Ms. Black, did you want to comment? Commissioner Smizer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just moved the staff recommendation.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Ms. Contreras, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
All right, and with that, we'll go, we've finished our administrative agenda. We'll go on to our standard agenda. We'll take two minutes to set up.
Mr. Chair, maybe while staff is setting up, I'm assuming you're, we're setting up for Item Number Three?
Item we're going to be setting up for, the Ad Hoc Agricultural Update Housing Update.
If we could, if I could just go over the projection report items?
Oh, we left that out of the, all right, let's go over the projection report.
Just to make it very clear, the December 4th special hearing that we had scheduled to continue the discussion of the Isla Vista Master Plan is dropped. So you'll see that that's not on your agenda.
Yes.
And I just wanted to remind you about the holiday lunch next week.
Oh, all right.
So that should be a nice affair. And then if the commission would like to discuss potential dates in January to hear the Isla Vista Master Plan, Mr. Goldstein is here. We had an opportunity to speak this morning, and would like to at least target January 24th, similar to the setup we had today, for a half-day introduction on the master plan, and then have a special hearing on your fifth Wednesday, January 31st, if the commission's available.
Okay, why don't we ponder that over the little break while we set up for two minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Black, just a question on the Pulver Lots. Are they, I haven't heard anything. Are they going to be ready? Madam Chair, I believe, or Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's take our short little break and get set up. Planning Commission will come back to order. We're on the standard agenda. Before we move Item Number Three, the Ad Hoc Agricultural Housing Update, to Number One, did you work on a date with Commissioner Smizer?
Mr. Chair, yes. I think what we'd like to do is to put on your projection report half a day on January 24th, and then a special hearing on January 31st, assuming the commissioners are available for that. And then, and then, we're going to renotice this, so we're dropping it from the agenda. So this isn't for noticing purposes, because we take to heart the comments made by the commissioners, and do feel that the public really needs to know that this is going to be heard. But we'll put those on your projection report if the 31st works for the commissioners. And then Mr. Goldstein will just confirm that those dates are indeed workable dates with the people that he needs to-
Thank you.
-follow up with.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Black, I was just wondering, I realize we're going to get the briefing here. If there's any benefit, other than just making an individual's site visit, I don't know how you make a site visit to Isla Vista. You just drive around, but there may be some, or it should be a question. Would there be any benefit in holding a site visit for all the commissioners at once? So, because sometimes the look and, you know, the show and the tell is better than the, just the words. And maybe that would be of some benefit. I don't know, maybe something for you to think about, because then we could drive around, and then you-
Very good point.
-put the rubber to the road, and say, "This is, this is what's envisioned here, and how this fits in, and..."
Why don't I, you look at that. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, why don't I discuss that with Mr. Goldstein, and we can come back next week and discuss it more fully with the commission?
Good idea, Commissioner Brown. Thank you very much. All right, and with that, Ms. Contreras, would you please read Item Number Three as Number One into the record, please?
Thank you. The Planning Commission will receive an update on the Ad Hoc Agricultural Housing Committee's outstanding issues and provide direction as appropriate.
All right, thank you. Is there any ex parte or excommunicate that anybody wants to speak on? All right, if not, let's go on to Mr. Cortez?
No, Mr. Baker will do it.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. You will recall, back in October, we came to you with, as a part of the Ad Hoc Committee's report on items they looked at, and there was a request that we go back and look at what all policy initiatives might be out there in relationship to what at that point was agricultural properties. What we're going to give you today is a little bit of a broader overview. We call it rural lands within the county. And I'm going to read to you a definition out of the general plan for what are called rural lands. It's, "Development is limited to agricultural and related uses, mineral extraction and related uses and activities, recreation, low-density residential and related uses, and use of a public or quasi-public nature. Minimum lot size is 40 acres, unless owned and used solely by a public agency. Existing smaller lot neighborhood developments are permitted within the rural area only in designated locations." So that's why we're calling rural lands. That's straight out of your general plan. Oh, now I've done it. How do I go back?
Mr. Chair, may I just ask Mr. Baker a question?
Yes.
Based upon that definition? So, Mr. Baker, based upon that definition, then, ag parcels that are 5, 10, or 20 acres aren't considered rural under that definition?
By definition of rural. That's correct. But, so we're including all rural lands, but the things that we're going to be talking about are, will include initiatives that relate to 5, 10, and 20-acre parcels.
So are there other county policies that are different for parcels that are smaller than 40?
Yes, there are.
Well, let me say, there may be, so, then, ag-related uses and low-density residential housing, which apply to 40 acres and greater, then don't necessarily apply to those parcels that are smaller?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there some-
There are specific parcels within your other zoning code that apply to those parcels.
So those then are looked at in a different way for ag viability issues?
Ag viability? I don't, I wouldn't say ag viability-
No.
-for ag development purposes.
Meaning?
Housing, or-
Okay, so-
Accessory buildings, etc.
All right, so on the smaller par, under, smaller parcels, then, the, it would, just based upon what you said, it would be envisioned that there could be more intensive development?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, there are currently 20 different policy initiatives that are under consideration. Or in the case of one of them, we've got it on the list, we've actually had some actions taken on a couple of them, but we wanted to make sure that you were aware of what those items are. As you will see when we show you the charts, there are seven in the long-range planning area, there are nine in planning and development, three in the ag commissioner's law office, and one in general services. What we're going to do is show you three different charts to show you how we are coordinating all of these activities across the spectrum, so that you see that we are taking them as a package in some respects, to make sure of what those impacts are, and the timing of those impacts, so that they will be, we will be able to judge whether there are conflicts or inconsistencies that exist. Okay, the chart that's on the screen now, and we gave you a chart as a part of your agenda packet, I will note that there's been one item added to that chart, and we gave you a new chart this morning, and that item is called zoning clearances for previously approved CUPs and development plans. And I'm going to go through a very quick definition of each of the items that are on the screen, so that you'll know what we're talking about. If you want further detail on any of these items, we have staff from each of the appropriate departments here, and they will be able to explain those to you. First item is the housing element, which you know is an item which is required by state law, and it's supposed to be done every five years. And it's, the element is really, it's the comprehensive plan to identify the amount and condition of existing housing stock, analyzing housing needs, and establishing county goals, objectives, and policies to address all those housing issues. That's the housing element. And I would note that all relevant housing-related projects are going to be included in the housing element as a part of that element. And you'll see that when we go through it, it's designated to be coming up and going before the Planning Commission, possibly in January and out in May. Those are projected dates. We don't have firm dates. Those dates could switch on us. As you well know, just like the redevelopment agency item that switched today with this. Second is the Uniform Rules Update. This one is set for the board for this coming Tuesday, December 5th. It is a set of rules which the county administers on behalf of the Agricultural Preserve Program through the state. The last time that this was updated was 1984. The Ordinance 661 Updates, they were adopted in the 1960s. They were replaced in most areas by Article III in 1983. But there are a number of parcels out there that are still remaining in 661. This is to bring consistency and bring it into the Article III zoning regulations as a part of its process. The San Andres Valley Community Plan was last reviewed for its appropriate land use and zoning designations in 1980, 81. And the, with this plan that has been revised, it will be coming forward and be dealing with a full range of comprehensive land uses, water uses, all of the different things that are contained in the comprehensive plan. And you can get more information from the comprehensive planning staff when that comes up. The Mission Canyon Area Plan was done in, an update in 1984. There is currently a Mission Canyon Plan Advisory Committee that's assisting in the creation of new design guidelines for that plan.
Oh, you're on a different page than we are, I think.
There's no Mission Canyon.
No Mission Canyon in ours.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I will move to the Process Improvement Items that are within planning and development. The first one are the agricultural-related changes for housing. They are, and this is the item that probably has gained the most attention over the past several months. The proposal was to deal with downshifting farmworker housing and single-family resident units on agricultural properties. The proposals that were being considered were not to change any of the requirements or provisions of the codes that applied to these lands. It was to strictly downshift the permitting level that would make it an easier process for those that wanted to go through it, but no changes in the regulations. The next one is the Process Improvements on Agriculture-related Projects for the Non-Housing Items. And this was generally speaking to deal with accessory buildings, and to allow for different sizing of these agricultural facilities on agricultural lands. Currently, it's restricted to 20,000 square feet on a parcel. The next one are the Small Project Ministerial Projects. And these really still have to be identified, but there's concern that there are many small projects, like home, additions to homes, pools, and other improvements, that currently are requiring a land use permit. And the proposal that is being considered, and this is being looked at by the Process Improvement Team, the PIT, as it's called, to identify the projects that could possibly be downzoned to a zoning clearance rather than a land use permit. Zoning violations, this is one that is scheduled to come before this commission next week. And the concept here is, is that when you have a zoning violation on a property, it- And the concept here is, is that when you have a zoning violation on a property, it essentially stops the permitting process for any other activities that are being applied for. The idea here is, is that, that if you had enough feeling that, that the zoning violation was going to be cleared, that you would allow applications to move forward, as long as that zoning violation was going to be cleared. This doesn't enact anything that's new in terms of what's going to be regulated, it just says that we, we can allow properties with a zoning, a zoning violation to move forward.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't, next week are we seeing that? The zoning violations?
It's not.
I thought-
I, I think we're seeing zoning clearances next week.
I'm sorry, it is the zoning clearances, okay. The Galida overlay is the next one, and this is really not necessarily farmlands, but it's an item which we wanted to make sure that you know. This is one that is, is moving forward, and it's shown on the screen, it is, is scheduled. And it's, it's essentially for changes to the code that would require brush removal activities in the mountainous zone in Galida. Next one is ZORP. You've already seen the major portion of this, but we put it on because we still have some activities to do with regard, in relationship to the Montecito area. We don't see that this is impacting any farmlands or anything. This is essentially just a cleanup in terms of consolidating things into a, a single zoning code instead of having a separate one. The agricultural home occupation ordinance is one that was scheduled, and now it has been placed on hold. It will be considered as a part of the EIR for the housing element. This is to allow for commercial business operations that are currently allowed in the county to be conducted, and they're currently allowed, but they have to be within the same structure of the residence, and it could be any size. This would allow a separate structure up to twelve hundred square feet, and it would also allow there to be three workers in that, that structure that do not reside. Currently, you have to reside in the area as well as having the home occupation. The common ones that you see are people that like run accounting offices and, or small businesses in residential areas, but there are some that are out there in agricultural areas, and so the idea would be to allow a, an enlargement of, or a separation of that from the residence, but not to exceed twelve hundred square feet. They are not to be residences. Occupation is designed to be, means business-oriented, not occupying the, as a residence.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Baker, I note that in your, on attachment C, that for expanded home occupation, the environmental review process is TBD. That's the first thing. You said it's going to be in the housing element.
We're going to, we will, we will look at it as a part of the housing element. If, if it, if it fits, then it will be included in there.
I, I guess I don't understand how a commercial enterprise on ag fits in a housing element? Maybe-
Because there was concern that, that it would stimulate housing growth, and so we said we will take a look at it. Whether it will, in the end, be there, we'll have to wait and see.
But there may be other consequence, unintended consequences from commercial activity on-
Sure.
-ag property that's got nothing to do, and I, I don't, would, is, is the housing element the place to look at that?
But, but there was, but again, there was concern raised that it would have impacts on housing, and that's the reason that we have said we will hold it off until that process.
So, it's going to only be looked at in, for that narrow slice, just-
Just for the impacts.
All right, thank you. On housing, on housing, thank you.
That's correct. The next one, discretionary applications review, this is one that is really quite far out. It's just that the PIT group said, "We think we need to look at a number of, any number of items that might be subjected to," again, "downshifting of application processes." There are no specific items that we have identified in this process at this point in time.
Kind of a catch-all for everything.
But it's, but it's one that we are looking at, we want to let people know that it's, that we and the PIT are looking at, and we wanted people to be, understand that. The next one is into the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, which is called the Area Baseline Study. It's in, in conjunction with the American Farmland Trust to develop agricultural resources, environmental, and economic assessment study. This is one that is just getting off the ground, so, but it, the idea is to see viability, economics, et cetera, of agricultural properties in the county. The next one is the Grading Ordinance Assessment, uh, which will be actually put in, in conjunction with the area study in terms of the economics of doing farming, and so that if, should there be changes to the grading ordinance to make agricultural more viable in terms of farmlands. And the last one is agricultural buffers, and this is, you know, both residential and municipal and farmlands want to have some protection for each side, so that you've got dust, noise, pesticides, et cetera, from a, the point of view of residential areas you've, and, and, and commercial areas, and you've got concerns of vandalism and that, those kinds of things from the farmlands, so there, there's going to be a look at that. Again, this is a bit of a ways off, but it's, these are the, okay, so these are the items that are contained in your listing. The dates that are shown, as I stated earlier, are projected, in some cases they have been completed. ZORP, the first phase has been completed. The EHS overlay is already scheduled for the Board of Supervisors this month. The Uniform Guidelines is scheduled for the Board of Supervisors, are, next month, and the, and the Board, Uniform Guidelines are also scheduled for next month. The others may or may not happen on the dates that are shown, but the idea was to show you in a time sequence of when we're at least looking at, out through the end of this fiscal year, when items would be coming forward to either the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors.
The General Services item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I did forget. Bob Nesbit's here, and I don't, I don't have a sheet, so that's why it's here. The agricultural, the, but, General Services item, that is the last one on your list, is the infamous salamander issue, and this is the, this is there to show you that it's impacting rural lands. It is just in the very beginning stages of forming a study committee, there are no dates set for any kind of actions coming forward to anybody at this point in time, but we wanted to alert you that it's out there. The likelihood of anything coming forward this fiscal year is, I think, very slim, very slim. There could may, maybe some updates of what they're doing, but no actions that you would take in terms of any kinds of actions by you or the Board of Supervisors. And that completes the list. Now, I'd like to go on and finish up on terms of looking at these in a, in different ways.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, on the expanded home occupation, I'm sorry to beat this into the ground, but this must have been a recent decision to add it to the housing element, because it's not in the notice of preparation for the EIR, and I'm wondering how people, is, how's the public going to know that that's going to be considered if that notice of prep's already been out, you've already held your first hearing?
Ms. McGinnis?
Ms. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I guess to be specific, as we review the project description as part of the housing element, EIR, we will be considering any policies or issues that may affect the development of housing in the agricultural area. So, as it, as the home occupation may pertain to housing issues, those issues will be considered, but the housing element, EIR, there isn't project definition around the home occupation that will be analyzed specifically in the housing element, EIR. So, the housing element, EIR, will, will not serve as the environmental review process for home occupation. That is being put off until-
I realize it's just the concern about the housing, I guess, how are you, how are you framing the question of how you're going to look at that? Who's, I'd, I'd be interested to know, just, other than it's, as Mr. Baker said, it's the concern about that it may create more housing need, and I'm just, other than that one question, has it been framed in any other way? How you're going to sort of look at it, you know, put it under the crystal ball to look at it, or the magnifier? Is, is it just that simple?
It, it, I, I believe it's that simple, and when we get to the cumulative impact section, any potential long-range development, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. Continue, Mr. Baker.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the next chart is to show you the impacts, and this is looking at it from the policy regulations or the policy impacts on agencies or institutions or business or whatever it might be, you'll note, and it's just to give you kind of a sense of, we keep looking at all these different impacts, so that we make sure that if there's any conflicts that can exist, that we will be identifying them as we move through the process on any of them. You'll note that a number of them say "to be determined" because we don't know what those are, but, uh, if you want any kind of a description of the different things going across, but I think for the most part, they tend to be pretty self-explanatory.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, it seems to me that under the uniform rules, that there should be Xs in public services and utility, utility districts, because there, there are some changes, for instance, the Bed and Breakfast or the Guest Ranch, that will affect public services, and it may affect utility districts if a property's in a particular utility district, I would guess. Is that, is that accurate or not?
Let, let David answer that if he can.
To, to a certain extent, rural lands don't have the utility service districts, and that, for example, with the gas branches, there's no new structures being built, the existing services should serve those particular structures.
The, the services will just be increased because of-
Correct.
Okay, but wouldn't that affect public services because there will be an increase?
To, to a marginal impact, not, not significant enough to review it at that level.
Fire, for instance, comes to mind. I mean, if it's in a special problems area, I mean, I don't know, my mind can sort of wander here, but it just seems to me that, that maybe those things ought to be looked at.
Lisa Bedragui is here, she also has a comment on, on that particular-
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, it just, as David was indicating, prob, quite possibly to a marginal degree, but those facilities would typically be served by private facilities versus public services, with the exception of fire, but again, fire, you need to still provide those, that infrastructure.
But it's an increase in sort of the use and cause.
Yeah, it, you could maybe put an X there, but it, it would be marginal.
Well, I just wonder if we should be looking at the entire range of all the services that need to be analyzed.
Okay, thank you. And in the future, when anybody speaks, if we haven't spoken before and identified yourself, please give your name, because it's for the record and we have it on tape. All right, thank you. With that, Mr. Baker, would you please continue?
Okay. The next piece that we want to look at is the, the actual environmental review matrix that, that shows how maybe all these things start coming together, and what you're going to see is that SEQUIS requires that a league agency consider not just the potential for significant environment impacts, but take into account the cumulative impacts of all initiatives that are underway at a given time. And I want to emphasize that the, it's the cumulative impacts of, of policy initiatives underway at that time. If you can't identify, or if you really don't have a, a good handle on what those impacts are, they can't be considered in that, but it's to take, take into account those impacts. And the next chart depicts that set of environmental requirements, and I think, again, if you look across, it shows you where our, we look at it and say the, that the, we're going to have to take into account cumulative impacts as we move through. The only thing that I would change on this one is where it says zoning clearance with relationship to CUPs or development plans, that it says "to be determined," that really is incorrect. It's exempt because there is, it's, it's, it's just looking at the permitting process, it is not looking at any, any change in terms of the regulations that currently exist. There are no questions. The next one is, we did a map that we're trying to show you where these different things exist in an overlay fashion, and so, maybe a little bit hard to read, but the, the green areas are the uniform rules area, ordinance six-six-one are the red areas, those areas that are bound, or I guess I would call it maroon on the ordinance six-six-one to differentiate from the next one, the current community plan projects are bounded in red, and you can see that they are, the Galida Valley Plan, or the San Inez Valley Plan that is right here, Loos Alamos, which is very hard to see, but is here, and then you have the overlay district, which is in a purple color, which doesn't quite show purple on the, the screen, but it is this area right here that is covered by the, the EHS overlay plan. So, it's to give you an idea of where those areas are in terms of their interrelationship in a physical way.
Is the majority of that in the fifth district, six-six-one, or is there some in the, in the fourth? I can't tell.
David, can you answer that?
That is correct, a majority is in the fifth district.
I mean, you can see that, but I'm not sure if this piece that's right up, some of this stuff up here may, may fall into the fourth district, but-
All right, thank you.
I guess over in here, potentially, but anyway. And then, this chart is to give you a sense of the building blocks in terms of the environmental review, so that you can see, we start with the uniform guidelines, which are before the board next month, the San Inez Valley Community Plan, which incorporates those impacts coming out of the uniform rules relating to specifically housing and any other items that we see, but it could, which again, could be the, uh, any, any of the items that were scheduled on the previous page, but the big one was the one that we scheduled for being out there, the, toward the end of this fiscal, this fiscal year is the housing element, which incorporates the uniform rules and the San Inez Valley Plan. And with that, to let you know that we feel we are synchronizing, uh, the under, and that what we're looking for is, is just any questions that you might have, because the process is moving forward on all of these items, but we wanted to make sure that you and the public had a sense of what all those items are. And with that, we'll be prepared to answer any questions. If you've got detailed questions, I'm going to field them out to these folks that are present to be able to respond to your questions.
Commissioner Brown.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, I don't understand on the last slide, the relationship of the uniform rules to the San Inez Valley Community Plan, because I think that's already sort of been, the EIR, I guess, hasn't been done, is in the process, right? Or will be soon, but the plan has been completed. So, but, uniform rules, did the, did the VPAC look or had the opportunity to consider them vis-à-vis the community plan when it was in the process?
Ms. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I think that slide indicates that as the environmental review is conducted on the plan that is proposed, that came out of the VPAC discussions, the cumulative impact section of that EIR will take into consideration the uniform rules.
Okay.
And, and then as you stair-step up similarly, when the housing element, EIR, is prepared, as it's being prepared, the cumulative impact section of that housing element, EIR, will take into consideration the uniform, what's proposed in uniform rules as well as San Inez Community Plan.
The, the reason I ask is because even within the visioning document recently done for the Galida, Eastern Galida Valley, you know, there, there is a confluence of all these, um, projects, if I can use that word loosely, for these regulations, and there was no sort of understanding by the community of what was involved, or what was going forward in the uniform rules, how it would affect any of the areas or lands that they were looking at, and I'm, I am concerned that perhaps the same thing happened in the San Inez Valley, that they didn't have that opportunity, they were, everything was running a parallel course, and the parallel course didn't meet, and so, we're sort of now catching up, and they're meeting in the EIR. Is that, is that sort of where we are with this?
Well, I believe that the uniform rules, as you may know, started back in two thousand three, I believe, and when the initial study was first conducted, and, so, the definition around the community plan, it wasn't there. It wasn't ready for initiation or EIR when that took place.
No, but, but certainly, things were happening in, within, for some of the changes that the VPAC, I don't know when they completed, sometime last year, five, I don't know, that they could have at least been briefed on or considered, is that, so I guess that didn't happen, and it's now going to happen at a later point.
Well, maybe Derek Johnson can speak to this, but I, I believe that we've got a sequencing issue here, and we move through these projects where, when the projects are ready for, and they're, they've been defined to a level that they're ready for and in- been defined to a level that they're ready for, and initial study and determination of what level of environmental review is necessary, we look at the entire landscape of projects and if, or initiatives, and those that have been defined to the point of being, making a determination on the appropriateness of environmental review, need to be included as part of the environmental analysis in that respective cumulative impact section. So we've got several projects that are coming along, as you've seen on this chart, they're all at varying levels of definition or preparation, and SEQUIS is very clear that you need to be able to move forward with projects, even if you know other projects are coming forward but aren't defined yet. And the intent of SEQUIS is not to hold up all projects until you get to the last project for a large EIR. So I guess, you know, what this indicates is, is that we are doing adequate environmental review, and I think perhaps what your point is, and I know that the Board of Supervisors made this very clear last week, which was, they want community plan processes, they want all of these processes to be informed as to the other policy initiatives being discussed, so that, for instance, in the case of the community plan process in Galita, it will have the benefit of being informed as to what's going on with uniform rules or any other issue. And I think that has happened to some degree, it will certainly happen into the future, but we need to differentiate between informing processes and SEQUIS analysis. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. Could we do a better job of informing other processes? Absolutely, and we'll do our best into the future, but from a SEQUIS standpoint, it's clear that we've met the letter of the law here.
My concern was, the step before you got to SEQUIS, was informing the other processes, that there hasn't been this intercoordinated relationship with people who are, communities undergoing community plan processes where they can be informed about these other issues. Now, maybe they were, I don't know, and certainly in the Eastern Galita Valley, they weren't. Is it significant for that area? I don't know, but I think it all should play a part, and I, having been to every single one of those meetings, I don't, the only, where I got information on uniform rules is being on, sitting on the Planning Commission. And that's why I see that there wasn't this web of interconnection that I think needed to be, certainly for Galita, and I can't speak for the San Inez Valley, but I just wonder that, you know, the way it's indicated here, it appears that there was. Now, there probably was with the housing element and all that in the community plan because there was, because they had to look at specific sites and other things, but with the uniform rules and how those changes might be affecting parcels that they were looking at, I just wonder if that ever occurred. And I don't, I know it never occurred in the visioning effort. Now, it probably will as it goes forward into the G-PAC. So that was my only comment, is I'm sure that it's all being taken care of at the other end, but, and I think, as you said, it's about informing the other processes, and I think it's important that we do a really good job of having all these things work together.
Thank you. Commissioner Smizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to preface my questions with, first with some comments. I want to actually, this is the first time, and I want to commend staff, because I believe this is the first time I've ever seen such a thorough analysis of the various ag projects that are going on in a county. And as was, as was mentioned, we have some 20 going on, maybe 21, now that we added one today, 21 different ag-related projects going forward. And I know that this has been the work of many people putting this together, I want to thank the Ag Commissioners' Office, Ms. Bedrogue, Mr. McGinnis, certainly our Planning Director, and all of those involved. This kind of approach, a schematic, here's, when we talk about integration and removal of conflicts and synchronization, I believe what Mr. McGinnis said is correct. I believe that staff is doing an adequate job in terms of SEQUIS analysis and environmental review. But there's another element to this, and that is, you have policymakers here. And when we don't know what's going on, that there are 20 different projects going on in the county, it's very difficult to make consistent policy. And oftentimes, when we have an individual project that comes forward, it's very difficult to understand how that individual project fits into the larger scheme of changes to ag lands that are going on when you've got 20 different plans going forward. And I applaud you that you've synchronized this, you understand what's going on, you have it all mapped out. When I look at this map, too, I see that about half the county, I mean, I'm colorblind, so I'll, again, I'm speaking for the color-deficient folks, I can't tell what is, but I see that there's a lot of darker sections on the white section, and I'm going to guess that most of this is ag lands. So when we're talking about ag lands, this is a huge part of Santa Barbara County. I mean, it's between ag lands and national forests and Vandenberg Air Force Base, it's just a little bit of ground is left. I'm looking at maybe almost 80% of the landmass taken up in those bodies, or even more, higher. Okay, so it's important. And so here are some questions that I have for you. We had asked, at least I had asked, and I think I got the consensus of the Planning Commission, that we have a regularly scheduled meeting to discuss ag-related issues. And I, again, I applaud what you have done here, because now this even strengthens my recommendation that there, we have 20 separate activities involving land use going on, major land use, changes going on regarding ag lands, and this is the first time I've ever really seen an integrated approach. So I really believe that that's necessary to have, that this Planning Commission have a set time when we're going to look at ag-related issues, and I think that this should be updated for us at those meetings. I think it's the only way to keep this body informed and on target and on the same page as the professional planners, planning staff. And since we're here to make planning decisions and policy decisions, I think it's critical. The other question that I had is this, so first, let me ask that question, let me get an answer. Do we have a date set yet for an incorporation into our schedule of ag planning dates?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Smizer, we do not have set dates at this point in time. We can do that, if that's the Commission's desire, and we'd schedule them quarterly, semiannually, whatever that might be appropriate. I mean, I don't think any of us see anything further coming between now and the end of this fiscal year of items that are ag-related.
I think 20 is enough.
I mean, and actually, we got 20 here, which, some of them are borderline related to ag, very much so, I mean, you've got, well, borderline related to ag, I will say that.
Okay. I would really, Mr. Chair, I would really appreciate if we could get some commitment to doing this, because it is, it's a, to me, it's a key issue. I have one other concern that I'm going to ask, and that really, it relates in a broader overview, but when these issues come to us for review, not for decision, but just for review, we sit and we scour the material and we come up with lots of recommendations, and you have some really talented people that sit on this commission. And so pour in lots of energy, lots of time, and we come up with recommendations. And I remember a joint meeting with the Monoceto Planning Commission and this body, where we looked at home occupations, and we had probably three sheets of recommendations and concerns. We also looked at the uniform rules, and we had a number of concerns, one of which was, I had asked to see this kind of an approach done with the uniform rules. And the reason is because what was shared with this body was just the uniform rule changes, not how it would relate to Santa Barbara County ordinances, not how it would relate to coastal commission, not how it would relate to all of the different ordinances that would affect a project as it went through. And the reason why I asked for that was that as policymakers, it's impossible for anyone to know what a simple change in the ordinance, in the uniform rules would mean, because there are other limiting ordinances. So someone may say, well, this is going to cause explosive housing growth. Well, not if it's limited by other ordinances. And I was told by staff, well, you don't have the big picture, because I had raised some concerns, I was told by staff, you don't have the big picture. The big picture will answer a lot of your questions, and the big picture is you're not integrating with our county ordinances and our, and coastal commission concerns, coastal issues, a number of other factors, community plans. So, and I was, think I was told that that has been done, that that integration has been done for the Board of Supervisors. I hope so, because I think they're going to be in the same situation if you present it without it. Here's my question. It would, can we, as a Planning Commission, see those changes that we have recommended before they get sent on? Because if they, if your recommendations to the Board of Supervisors include them, then I think some of the concerns that we have as a commission will be addressed. I have yet to see what I asked for, which was a synchronization of the uniform rules with our other ordinances in the county. And since I haven't seen that, I'm still, I still have constituents that come up to me and say, how come this is, why are you not opposing the uniform rules? This is going to cause this problem, and that problem, and that problem. And all I can say is, well, staff tells me it's not going to cause that problem, because I haven't seen the integration. And I think that that's not, I, so, can we see those, when we make these recommendations, like to the home occupations and the uniform rules, and all of the things that come before us for review, can we get a copy of the staff report to the Board of Supervisors to make sure that our concerns have been addressed as it moves forward? Otherwise, I don't know what we're doing here.
Mr. McGinnis.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smizer, just to let you know that, in fact, the Commission's comments and recommendations were taken forward to the Ag Preserve Advisory Committee, who incorporated those changes. Your changes and recommendations have been incorporated into the uniform rules, which are going forward to the Board of Supervisors, and we'd be happy to provide you with a copy of how those changes were incorporated, as well as the staff report for that project and all future projects. Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to say, I sympathize with staff, because we started with a subcommittee report that we heard a few weeks ago, and this was the second step of that, which was actually to take action as a full commission on those recommendations, and they're before us. But in an effort to make clear to the commission and the public how many initiatives currently underway in the county might touch on ag, we have received a very comprehensive overview today. And what that does in reverse is it stimulates a whole lot of concerns and questions about specific items. So I can imagine that, I know I bit my tongue a couple of times on specific issues that were mentioned in the presentation, but I think it is very valuable to see on one page or four pages, all the things that are working on, and what we have to keep in mind moving forward is that while we zero in on one project or one area of the county, there is a lot that might affect it, and we depend on staff tremendously to pull all those things together. One of the recommendations of our subcommittee is, and this is aged now, and certainly has been discussed in other contexts, but we were suggesting that these issues are interrelated enough, and in order to assure that the commission would have the benefit of what's happening on one initiative when it's considering another, that the ad hoc committee remain in place for a while until we move these along. Commissioner Smizer suggested that that exercise was important as well, so important that the entire commission should consider these things rather than simply an ad hoc subcommittee, and for very good reasons, I thought. So we're going to get to that, as far as the discussion of what the best way to do that is. But I don't want to lose the momentum that staff has provided here with giving us the overview, and as we move forward, for example, with the uniform rules, keep in mind that the uniform rules regarding agricultural preserve properties does not suggest that only housing items are impacted. We may be taking those up in the context of the housing element EIR, but that's not to say that the environmental review done on the uniform rules shouldn't stand on its own feet, and it will. And, you know, I'm sure it'll be subjected to scrutiny at the Board of Supervisors, potentially even in court, on its own merits, as to the impacts of the changes in the uniform rules. So our recommendation regarding, including, the uniform rules' impact on housing generally is just one chunk of that. And that's, I'd like to bring us back to those recommendations before we get too far afield, and at the same time, assure staff that the commission, at least I am, am very pleased to have everyone come forward like this at one time and give us the benefit of your combined thinking. And perhaps we'll have an opportunity in the hearing to not only hear from the public, but from other individuals like Mr. Gillette on how he sees the process best working in the future. I will say that, to the extent ag issues are considered by other bodies in the county, I want to put in a plug that the Planning Commission, with this big picture in mind, needs to hear about those as well, because it's very difficult to consider any issue which impacts our ag lands that does not concern us at the Planning Commission level, which is the point Commissioner Smizer just made.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I realize we've yet to go down to public comment, but while we're all discussing this, I do want to mention that I do appreciate the overview. Some of my concerns were that, I think I knew most of this because we've seen it in pieces, but it's great to see it all on one sheet. And in that regard, it's great to have staff to represent each of these projects, if you will, and to be able to respond to any of our questions, and I think that that is what this commission has been missing, is those important pieces, when we do have questions about this, we tend to get a staff report and the person who's written that staff report, but I think it really goes beyond, it's a much larger picture, and I'm glad to see that Mr. Gillette is here and Ms. Bedrogue, because I think that's very helpful, and Mr. McGinnis and your staff, too, to help fill in some of those blanks that sometimes that we don't have, and that if we have questions, because I know I have lots of questions about this, that it's helpful to have the experts who can provide that insight. But I would like to see, as we go forward, some regularly scheduled meeting, maybe once a quarter, and if there is no, not any project progress per se, that there are other issues within these that would be helpful to discuss, because I know that the Ag Advisory Committee looks at issues that sometimes go on a parallel track, that I think, that would... would be helpful for this commission to be aware of, um, before it gets to us in some project where things are already decided. But anyway, I just wanted to sort of fill in my blank there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Looks like the planning commission is very interested in the ag situation. Maybe we could take them out for a field day and have them pick strawberries for a day or something. You know, uh, the state of California, about 48% of the property is owned by the governments, whether state, federal or county. Forty-eight percent is in farming and we live on 4% of the land. So, uh, we need to be very careful of how we make these allocations. As I recall, coming back on the planning commission, the state, the documents that we dealt with in the early stages were a little difficult to read, but there's been a refinement, especially that ZORB document. It is an exceptional document, the consolidation of all those documents into one. And I for one, am looking forward to the use of that. I've been unofficially using it, but I know that in January it becomes the official document, I hope, you know? And there'll be other documents that'll be incorporated, hopefully, community plans and so on. And so we're in the process of refining things and some of the questions that you hear from the commissioners sometimes are a little sticky and that's because the commissioners are more informed, better informed than in previous years, you know? The struggle to get information in previous years was very difficult and commissioners worked very hard. Now, if you put the time in and you look at the documents, there's the information in the documents and a phone call to a planner if you don't understand something. All right. And with that, we're going to open the public hearing. Our first speaker today is Mr. Mike Lunsford. Normally we allow three minutes for every speaker, but this is a very important issue and I think we can give each speaker an extra minute. Mr. Lunsford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Mike Lunsford, representing the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. And, uh, I, I want to start by saying that I'm shocked and dismayed by the scope of the changes that are presented before you. This matrix demonstrates and this 20 items that are going along separately and have been, um, and are just now just, you know, recently come to your commission so that you can, uh, see whether or not they're properly coordinated. It's my understanding that the kinds of changes that are, uh, uh, you know, kind of in this process have not been coordinated with, you know, the municipal districts, the different kind of special districts and what the implications are to them. There's a, there's an implication in that and, and from the point of view of a public, uh, you know, a citizen who's interested enough in what our future is as a community to spend so much time volunteering my, you know, my efforts, uh, to bring you concerns and so forth. It, it, it creates this suspicion and I don't know if that's founded or not, but there is a suspicion about this because it's driven on these other, you know, on, from a staff level, we're, you know, and then it doesn't get to policymakers. This is not a, a shift in policy that's an open dialogue and policy down from decision makers down. This is, appears to be derived from a variety of other interests that are coming up in pieces. And it's our ag lands that make the difference for our future. Okay? It's the, what happens on the ag land that's going to change our quality of life. To demonstrate just how much that can change our quality of life, think about Los Angeles County. In the 30s, it had some of the most productive ag land in the country. Between 1939 and 1970, they lost 97% of it and you know what the result is. We drive through it from time to time. Okay? What happens on ag lands is, is very important to the whole community, not just the current ag owners. And I would suggest to you that some of these changes are not in the best interest of long-term agriculture, they're in the best interest of our current set of operators. And so we need to make sure that we make that distinction, that if we're, we want to do something good for ag land, let's think about the long-term implications, not just the benefits to existing operators and owners. In this document here, this is, uh, part of the housing element and it's talking about the needs for housing on ag lands. And there's a lot of nice effort in the beginning here to document the needs for agricultural workers, housing for agricultural workers. Nobody disputes that. That is a noble goal. And yet, as we go through this and we begin to see what the recommendations are from the Ag Advisory Committee and elsewhere, we see the housing under the uniform rules changes and under these other processes with no restriction as to who should live there or who could live there. Okay? So that turns into rental housing and at least we have to expect that it can. So I urge you to be very careful with this process. We have deep concerns about the, the, the essence of the changes themselves, but also the process that's, that this has been going on with. So, uh, thank you for, uh, your, your looking into this today.
Thank you, Mr. Lunsford. Baumfield, followed by Doreen Farr.
Chairman Valencia and, and, uh, members of the commission. I wonder, I appreciate the extra minute. I, I have four or five points that I'd like to respond to, questions that were raised about the valley and the plan, if, if I could, uh, I have a short statement, it might fit into four minutes, but if I might. One of the comments that was, um, made, I believe it was by Mr. Baker, was that housing has been, uh, the major issue. And, and I'd like to say that I, that, but let me first say, I'm very pleased with all the progress that has been made here. I, I don't want to start off crabby. Um, it really is remarkable that, the, I think the thing, the bell sort of rang, uh, only three months ago that all these things were in the works. And so the, the progress on, on all of your parts and on staff to bring this up is, is, I think we've got 100 days here. It, it's really quite commendable. I'm not sure any more progress could have been made in such a short period of time, but we're, we're not at the goal line yet. Uh, and that's not a criticism. The fact that housing has, has been the major issue in discussions, I think is, um, a fault in where we are at this point. It, I don't even personally believe it is the major issue, but, uh, staff and the proponents of these changes and some supervisors have talked about nothing but the housing issue. And it's kind of restricted, I think, other people's thinking from the breadth of the issues that are in here. For example, the, the industrial development that is in the downshifting, um, and, and would be allowed under the uniform rules, just, just from the intersection of 154 and 246 in the San Inez Valley, down to the town of San Inez, which is a mile at the most. These proposals would, um, enable without any BAR review, without a trip to the planning commission and without SEQA, 1.6 million square feet of ag industrial development, just from, from that intersection to town. The bed and breakfasts that are proposed, it's one per Williamson contract. There are 212 Williamson contracts in the San Inez Valley alone, that's 1,200 rooms. So when all we talk about is housing and then the, it tends to get shifted to just the farm worker segment of the housing, we're really missing the big picture. So I think that's an accurate report of what the discussion has been focused on to date, but I hope that it broadens dramatically. Home occupation, it was said that it only permits existing, already allowed uses to be in a separate building. That is quite far from accurate. It allows virtually any business that could be allowed in the county if it meets development standards and that is not permitted under the current home occupation. And therefore, to Commissioner Brown's question about the housing, with three commuting employees enabled to work on ag land, it raises the question of if, have we not increased the number of ag-related workers by three times the number of home occupations, expanded home occupations? So the, the demand or the number of people who qualify as ag workers could be driven up dramatically. Secondly, uh, these people are probably being paid more than, I think it's $7.70 an hour that the true farm ag worker makes. So we have more people with more money and I think both of those add up to more demand for housing, more people who could pay for housing. So that's the connection to the housing. A quick one on the downshifting in the pit. Initially, it was set up to make it easier to get what you already have a right to, simplify paperwork, simplify meetings, but it's morphed over time and now includes some significant new additional development rights that were not included in any ordinances. And so there's impact there that needs to be looked at environmentally too. It's not just downshifting. It's not just saving 30 or 60 days to get the permit. There are dramatic new development rights included. The guest ranch, it was commented that there will be no new structures, uh, built. What actually it says is you have to use an existing structure. It doesn't say that you can't convert your house to a bed and breakfast and then go pull a permit for a new house. This is a loophole you could take a train through sideways, pun intended. And with regard to the, uh, San Inez Plan and the ag proposals and the housing element in the ag proposals, um, these were not brought, neither one brought to the, uh, San Inez Valley Community Plan. As VPAC chairman, I started asking for those back in February. I asked three times if they'd be brought and my requests were denied. The, the community was completely blindsided by these ag proposals and they affect, uh, as they currently sit, they affect, uh, at least in the pit and streamlining, all the ag one parcels two, and there are 1,600 of them inside the San Inez Community Plan boundary. So it's a huge impact and there was no, uh, no notice. Those meetings were being held in the same building we were holding the community plan meetings in. And the housing element, same thing, we, it was half-coordinated. Um, the, the housing element team has recommended second units on ag two parcels, which was not considered, um, in the community plan process. So they're pretty much disconnected too. The ag proposals are worse.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Yeah, okay. Here's my, and I have copies of this, I can get this on the, it takes about two minutes to read.
Uh, well, if you're, you're giving it to us, there's no sense reading it, I mean...
Well, there's other people in the public who may be concerned. We only have four speakers, you have a short agenda. May I request the, uh, permission to read this?
Is it one page?
Yes, this is it.
All right.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Um, "Over the past several months, the numerous problems with the various set of proposals for changes in land use for ag zone parcels in Santa Barbara County have been well documented in the public record. This documentation includes newspaper stories, op-eds and letters, as well as testimony and memos to the Planning Commission, county staff and Board of Supervisors. It is widely perceived that there are problems with both the process by which these proposals have been developed and with the proposals themselves. Processed problems include at least the appearance of conflict of interest, inadequate public notice, including, uh, now, uh, Chairman Valencia acknowledged violations of the Brown Act, they were alleged, I think, the last time we were before you, and apparent piecemealing violations of SEQA. I think the time has come for, to the county to take a very serious look at ag land use planning in a, in a more responsible manner. Agriculture is an important industry in the county, the largest, and ag zone lands represent 90% of the privately owned land in the county of Santa Barbara." So my, uh, simple advice for a constructive solution is that the planning commission should step up to its responsibility as the agency primarily responsible for land use planning in Santa Barbara County and recommend to the Board of Supervisors by next Tuesday's meeting, when they are going to address one of these packages, that primary responsibility for land use recommendations, which go to the Board of Supervisors relating to ag zone lands, be assigned to the planning commission. Right now, they're in the hands of advisory committees. That a series of well-noticed regional public meetings be held to collect input from all classes of owners of ag zone land, not just the big ag parcels who have participated to date, uh, the public agencies and the public. That we have a terrific starting point for discussion, which would be the existing proposals that have been created by the various ag advisory committees and county staff. And when all of the issues and proposals and their interrelationships are understood, then a comprehensive environmental impact study should be performed. And meanwhile, and this is the one that is time critical because of Tuesday's Board of Supervisors meeting, that the Board of Supervisors should not advance any of these individual proposals into policy until we get a grip on these issues. I understand that many of these proposals are well-intentioned efforts to correct past problems. I understand that there is a lot of political pressure to proceed without delay. I understand that almost everyone involved feels short on patience and long on work. However, I don't believe that an objective analysis of this situation can lead a responsible person to a conclusion much different from the above. These issues are of huge significance."
Thank you very much, Mr. Phil. Dorin Farr, followed by Cameron Benson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Doreen Farr and I'm the president of the San Inez Valley Alliance and I'm here today to represent that organization. First of all, I do want to thank you for requesting this information. Although the public had knowledge of most of these proposals, we certainly had no idea how many there were, 20 at least, that affect all of the agricultural land in this county in some way and all of which are in process at this point in time. And make no mistake, they do affect, uh, most of these proposals do affect the ag one parcels, the smaller parcels, as well as ag two. So to just define it as rural lands, I think is, uh, a bit misleading. Although staff has done a good job in providing this information, this list is just that, a list. It does not begin to address the full impacts of all of these proposals put together and their interrelatedness. For example, increases in allowed uses on non-Williamson act ag land under the permit streamlining proposals will make it more attractive to those currently under the Williamson Act to not renew their contracts. Housing, once built, no matter for what purpose, cannot be realistically monitored for compliance by the county in the rural areas and so any expressed or implied affordability is an illusion. So what you can end up with is a tripling or quadrupling of market rate densities on ag land with all the related infrastructure impacts. If you look at all of these items together, there, uh, there will be no marginal impacts, including to public services like fire and police. The proposed changes to the uniform rules alone will cause six class one impacts. First of all, significant and unmitigable losses to prime agricultural land because they can be paved over for other uses. Significant and unmitigable impacts from increases in noise levels, air quality pollutants and visual impacts. Significant and unmitigable impacts to all our roadways, big and small, and significant and unmitigable impacts to our groundwater resources, water which is the very lifeblood for the farming and ranching operations. Clearly, these proposed changes are numerous and far-ranging and won't just affect the owners of agricultural property. They will affect all of us, every resident of this county, no matter where we live. They will affect the Carpinteria Valley, the Goleta and Orchid Foothills and the Gaviota Coast, as much as they will affect the San Inez, Los Alamos, Santa Maria and Lampoke Valleys. What you have done here today is just the beginning. There now must be a series of public workshops out in the community and before this commission, which will look at all of the related and cumulative impacts from these proposals. The first step is today, please, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they not certify the EIR for the uniform rules next Tuesday, as well as the corresponding implementing documents. Much more supplemental work needs to be done and workshops need to be held, which will satisfy the concerns of both the public and the Department of Conservation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Cameron Benson, I'm the Executive Director of the Environmental Defense Center. I want to thank, I want to start by thanking you for, for holding this hearing today and specifically thanking the commission for requesting this report and for staff doing such an excellent job putting this together. It's, it's a very, very useful tool for us to have, uh, in trying to get a handle on all of these different projects going forward. As Commissioner Smizer pointed out, when we are talking about land use and development on agricultural lands in this county, it's very important for us to remember just how much of the land in Santa Barbara County is zoned for agricultural use. 90%, 90% of the privately owned land in Santa Barbara County is zoned for agriculture. And so when we're talking about changing the rules for development on agricultural lands, we're talking about changing the rules for development across the county. As I said, we, we appreciate this list of the 20 county projects that are affecting ag land. Land, and that finally the county is beginning to look at these projects together. One thing I'd like to note about the list, however, is that each of the 20 items contains several different components, and not all of them carry the same weight. For example, the uniform rules update includes over a dozen changes. And obviously, the housing element and community plan updates contain a broad array of complex issues as well. And several of these projects have been underway for many, many years. Several of them began long before the county even considered doing a uniform rules update. Indeed, the housing element is 2003 to 2008 housing element, and here we are starting an EIR now in late 2006. With regard to the specific recommendations proposed by the ad hoc subcommittee that are on the board letter, or, excuse me, the agenda letter that you have today, and the recommendations are coming from the subcommittee to the Commission to go to the Board, I think. I think that's the order of things. I want to say that the Environmental Defense Center supports those recommendations in general, but only with the following changes. And with regard to recommendation number one, we believe that the downshifting of all types of permits for development on agricultural land, not simply housing development, but all types of development, industrial, commercial development as well, should be analyzed in the housing element EIR. We also believe that the housing element changes should be analyzed in the uniform rules EIR. These projects have been moving forward simultaneously, and, you know, the county's looking at, now looking at analyzing the uniform rules impacts in the housing element EIR, but they're not doing it the other way around. With regard to recommendation number two, while we agree that the uniform rules changes should be analyzed, or, excuse me, excuse me, I think I've got that one. With regard to recommendation number three, I think it would be helpful for the Commission to clarify this recommendation and to request that the Board of Supervisors not act at all on the home occupation ordinance changes until your Commission has had the opportunity to review the changes and the impacts from those changes in the context of these 20 other projects. And finally, EDC would support Commissioner Smizer's recommendation that I think he brought up at the last hearing on this issue and discussed a little bit today, which is to not continue the ad hoc committee, which meets in private, but to hold regularly scheduled public meetings with the full Commission so that all the Commissioners and all of the public has an opportunity to keep up to speed on these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Anybody else? All right, that was our last speaker. Is there anybody in Santa Maria? See, apparently not. So with that, we'll bring it back to staff. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Just to clarify, the recommendations that are on the front page of the staff report to you today were the recommendations that came out of the last time around, so there's, they aren't recommendations to be made to the Board at any point in time. They were recommendations which we, in fact, have incorporated into the presentation we made today. So things, the things that are shown to be going out and being developed as a part of the housing element, in fact, that's the process that we are following. So that's one. Number two, I just want to point out that there are a number of the things that were spoken to by public speakers indicated that, you know, these go beyond what you currently can do. And particularly, I want to emphasize, in the downshifting areas, we were not talking about changing any of the regulations or criteria that would be applied to a project when we were talking about it. We haven't even developed an ordinance to bring forward to you in terms of an ordinance change that would be going to the Board anyway, but the discussions even did not include changes to the downshifting. They concluded ministerial moves, if you will, or administration moves, to bring those items to a lower level of permitting, but did not change the criteria and regulations that are currently in the zoning ordinance that would apply. Number two, well, I think that applies to the Ag housing, that applies to the industrial, commercial, with the exception of there was discussion. Again, nothing has been put in writing yet, but there was discussion about increasing the size of, that could be done. But currently, there are criteria that would be applied, the same criteria would still be applied in terms of anybody being able to do that. And thirdly, with regard to home occupation, there were, again, no changes in the criteria that would be applied. The idea was to allow them to have a separate building, but no changes in the criteria to be applied, with the exception of the discussion of whether you could have more workers there than currently are allowed, which is one residential. So I just want to make sure it's clear that the discussions were taking place, that that's what was taking place in terms of discussions, not anything that was previously stated.
Thank you. Usually, when we're making changes to some document, not everything is perfect, you know? It's a refinement, and it's a living document. Things will get better as we move forward. But at this time, I'd like to thank the Committee for all the work that they did, and specifically Commissioner Boyson and Cooney for taking so much time to work on these committees. With that, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Any comments? Commissioner Smizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say first that I support agriculture for several reasons, but I want to say a few of them because I think they may be germane to where I come from. I grew up in a rural community. Both of my parents' families were farmers. I spent much of my adolescent life on the back of tractors, combines, taking care of livestock. I have a degree in agriculture from the University of Maryland that I received while working as a ranch carpenter, putting myself through school. I work as an attorney representing agricultural businesses and interests. And I did that in several places in California. As you know, I'm currently a partner in Twitchell &amp; Rice, which is a major agribusiness firm. So agriculture's very important to me. It's kind of where I grew up. It's who I am, a large portion of me. What I'm hearing today, and I heard over the past couple meetings, was this, that a large portion of our community, as represented by the voices that were here today in the public comment, believe that the process, the public process, needs to be expanded when we're looking at these Ag projects. Agriculture and agribusiness form a framework upon, around which the rest of our community lives, works, and enjoys. And there is an integration between agriculture and more dense communities. There's an integration between agriculture and business. There's an integration between agriculture and our environmental communities. And so I think that, you know, I mentioned that it was important for this body here to get a clear picture of all of what's going on in Ag, so that we can make policy decisions that are informed and that are integrated, as integrated as what staff, how staff has integrated them. But I think there's also another element that we haven't talked about, and that is that the community, and I think Ms. Farr expressed that, I know Bob Field expressed that, I know that, I'm having a blank right now.
It's called a senior moment.
A senior moment. But all of the speakers came up and expressed this, and that was that the public also has a lot to share, a lot of viewpoints and interests that are not represented on the Commission and that are not represented in the staff that we need to hear. And I think that there have been, Mr. Field brought out some concerns that I think deserve some further discussion. I think we need to open the discussion up, particularly on the uniform rules, for further community input. And my recommendation to the Board of Supervisors would be that they hold workshops until these issues are resolved, how the changes to the uniform rules will affect the rest of the community, how it will affect the rest of agriculture, how it will affect community plans, what communities will be affected, what communities will not be affected, and so that the community can understand and be brought up to where staff is of understanding the integration of these. And it's possible, and I think very probable, that new issues will surface as our intelligent, informed community have an opportunity to further be involved in the process. And I think that, I don't, you know, as many of these projects that are going on, it's very easy to see that the community may not have known about some piece that was moving through the process. I'm not faulting staff. I'm just saying that what I've heard from the community is that they want to be more involved. And, you know, we want a community that's involved. We want a community that stands up and says, this, these are issues that mean a lot to us, and we want to share our expertise from our interest group, from our perspective, from our community, so that the product, the final product, is one that expresses the total community sentiments. And so that suspicions, fears, Mike expressed some concerns, that, of suspicion, a suspicion that things were happening that were outside of the ken of his radar screen. I don't want that, I don't want there to be a suspicion. I want it to be a, I think it's been an open process, but I want it to be even more open. And so my recommendation would be, and I would hope that the rest of the Commission would go along with this, that there would be more workshops on this, the issue of the uniform rules in particular, as it moves forward to the Board of Supervisors. I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Smizer. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would support Commissioner Smizer's recommendation. As I look at my own community plan area, over half of the area involves Ag. And I think it is important that we have this clear picture, that it's not only those members sitting on the Commission, but those people sitting in on these GPACs or even community members have an awareness and understanding of what is happening. And I don't think that we've seen that to date. I think staff obviously has a very good handle on it, but I think that the picture has been somewhat muddied, and we need to make it very clear. So I would, I would support that, as I would support the Commission having periodic meetings to review these issues and to tease apart some of these policies that come forward to them periodically, to help bring this larger understanding of just exactly what it is we do make decisions on, and what are, or what may be some of the unintended consequences. Because I think that we really need to understand that, and I don't think in the past that we've really had that understanding.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to the staff report and the Committee's recommendations, and I realize we've had the benefit of subsequent thinking as a group and further input from the public. But it still looks like items one through three of the recommendation that the Subcommittee makes to this Commission are appropriate. That is, we were basically seeking in the, in the just emerging housing EIR to include a number of these agricultural-related issues, even some that may just marginally involve or affect agriculture, we thought would benefit from environmental review in the context of the housing element EIR. So that includes anything relating to downshifting for farmworker housing. It includes the uniform rules and the impact that those changes will have on the overall housing picture. And also, though very marginally related to housing, the housing, the home occupation changes that we've discussed in the past. Item number four is a change, and I'm just one Committee member, but I do agree, we were very concerned that this process of integrating these various initiatives continue, even to the point where we perhaps, in a peak of self-deprivation, agreed to continue doing it ourselves. But I am the first one to support the Commission doing it as a body, and we will, we will encounter perhaps a slower, more deliberative process, but it will be more effective and more open. So I'd like to recommend that we modify item number four to basically provide some kind of general workshop, open workshop by the full Commission going forward, whether it's quarterly, whether now staff needs more time, but recommend that this, the Commission continue to monitor all of the items related to Ag in the context, not only of the housing element EIR, but in every other context as well. The issue about the uniform rules, to me, is a separate issue. We were briefed by staff on the changes in the uniform rules on at least two occasions, and we did provide input. And Mr. McGinnis informs us that that was passed along to the legally authorized body that is advising the Board of Supervisors on this, being the Ag Preserve Advisory Committee. So if we take the action being urged by some members of the public, that is really a matter that we need to tie to our purpose by suggesting that the Ag rules, making the changes they are, is really impacting our overall planning effort at the County Planning Commission. And I don't see how we can avoid connecting the two. If so much of our land is tied up in agriculture and we're making major changes to what can be developed on Ag lands, and particularly those lands which are in and benefit from Ag Preserve status, I really think this overall review that we're talking about undertaking now would benefit from a further study by this Commission of the Ag Preserve proposed rules. So I would support Commissioner Smizer in a separate recommendation now made to the Board of Supervisors to delay adoption of those rules, which is scheduled for next week.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyson. Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Boyson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Cooney as to the recommendations in the memorandum that perhaps number four be changed to direct the Planning Commission to continue its oversight and appoint ad hoc committees as it sees appropriate for specific issues to bring back to the Planning Commission. Perhaps that's a better wording than what we have. I think that that was kind of Commissioner Cooney's and my, at least, it was kind of my perception of that, that we would certainly keep the Planning Commission in the loop on this whole thing, but maybe a wording of that would be more appropriate. As to the uniform rules, I think, as has been stated here, we have discussed uniform rules at the Planning Commission, and as the county is set up right now, we really don't have any authority over uniform rules. Now, perhaps we should. That is a policy decision that can only be made by the Board of Supervisors. My recommendation, I mean, we passed along the uniform rules with our comments to the Board of Supervisors. I'm certain that staff will provide the Board of Supervisors with the comments that have been received today, and I'm certain that the public will be available at the Board of Supervisors hearings, and I would leave it up to them if they want to delay this any farther. And I'll be the first one to admit, I'm coming from a standpoint that, you know, I know that there are people that are, I know that there are individuals in this county that, under the auspices of saving Ag lands, are really saying that all we want is open space. And I'm not one of those. I want to see Ag continue to be viable in Santa Barbara County, and continuing to drag our feet on minor issues that will not allow the promulgation of agriculture into the future is not what I'm looking for. And so I just want to make sure that we balance that fine line between supporting agriculture and restricting agriculture. And it's, you know, we're, we seem to use the same arguments for both. And... that bothers me, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyson. All right, with that, we'll take the report now. I mean, we've been over just about everything, I think, with very specific comments, and the first three comments are agreed to. The fourth, the fourth comment, it starts, the direct, the ad hoc committee, we can scratch that and put the Planning Commission, just substitute in for ad hoc committee, Planning Commission, to continue its oversight. And with that, perhaps one of the members of the ad hoc committee would make a motion to approve that change, and we vote on it, and then we'll, as a recommendation. Commissioner Boyson?
Let's see, and I'd ask council, is, are, are we actually making a motion to accept this recommendation, or is, have we been notified?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Boyson, your agenda item calls for you to provide direction as appropriate. You can do that by consensus, or you can do it by a motion among yourselves, so, as long as it is in the form of, of, of direction regarding further work of the ad hoc committee or the Planning Commission in this general issue, excuse me, issue area.
Okay, and in that case, I would recommend that we accept the four recommendations contained in the memorandum with the change that has been noted here today in directing the entire Planning Commission to continue its oversight, and appointing ad hoc committees for specific issues as it sees fit to expand.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you very much. Before we go into vote for it, Commissioner Smizer?
I'd like to amend the motion if I can. And, and here's my amendment. I, I'm gonna kind of try and track the middle road here. I agree with Commissioner Boyson that, that the Board of Supervisors has the purview, and I also agree with his question as to whether or not this body should have some decision-making role in these kinds of matters. But, so, so as a compromise, I've heard from some of the commission members, Mr. Chair, that have, that would like to, during this hearing, would like to have a recommendation also attached as part of the commission's recommendation, that the Board of Supervisors hold workshops. I've also heard a recommendation that this commission hold workshops, and that the Board of Supervisors delay that decision on the uniform rules until such time as this board could hold, this commission could hold further hearings. I'm gonna ask that we, my recommendation, my motion would be that we make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that it hold workshops, whether it hold it here, at the Planning Commission, or workshops at the Board of Supervisors, I leave it up to them, but that they allow the, that this commission has recognized the need for further community input, and the Board of Supervisors can decide how much further input that would be, how many more workshops would be necessary, but I sense a division, and I'm just trying to accommodate that.
Commissioner Smizer, hold workshops prior to what?
Prior to making a decision to adopt the uniform rules.
All right. That's an addendum to this motion. The maker of the motion, Commissioner Boyson, do you accept?
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I, I'm still reluctant here, just perhaps because we, I haven't thought it all the way through. If we're saying that we, we want to include within our recommendation that the Board of Supervisors understand the importance of public input on these issues, I, I think that's kind of a redundant, as, as we all know, we all are appointed by individual supervisors that are, at least, I, I certainly know my supervisor, and the supervisors that I have come in contact with are, are extremely concerned with receiving as much public input as possible on all of these issues. So I'm, I, I just don't, I, I almost feel like we're telling them how to do their job, and I'm, I guess I'm not comfortable with that.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just, yeah, as a point of order, I think the commission would and should proceed on the motion that Commissioner Boyson put forward and consider as a separate matter a recommendation to the board regarding its hearing next Tuesday. To me, to put the whole thing in the form of one motion diffuses the initial impact, which is really the subcommittee recommending to the full commission that we proceed in a certain way with regard to our own review, and, and to make a recommendation to the board is entirely separate. So to me, I, maybe I'm over- compartmentalizing, but I'd like to see it as two motions.
All right, fine. Commissioner Smizer?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to make it as a separate motion.
All right, thank you very much. And as a clarification, we are nominated by the supervisor of the district, and we are appointed by the Board of Supervisors as a whole. All right, and with that, Ms. Contraz, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? I want to make sure what I'm voting on. I'm voting on to exclude that...
These four comments here with the word change, with the word change...
I understand, but, but I think it's the issue, so we're taking out, so there's going to be another motion?
Yes.
And the first one doesn't, okay, thank you, yes.
Yeah, the other one deals with workshops and implementation. Did you call the rule?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
All right, and now comes a new question. Commissioner Smizer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm going to just go ahead and ask for what I really would like then, since it's not going to be attached with the other motion. And that is a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors return the matter of the uniform rules to the Planning Commission for further, further public review in workshop form to answer some of the issues that have been raised by the public. And I, I want to just, that's the motion. I would, I do want to address Mr. Boyson's, Commissioner Boyson's concerns, and I, I too, we're not here to tell the Board of Supervisors how to act, or, and they understand the public comment is important. But I think what happens, and the reason why I'm suggesting this is this, when we put forward recommendations, most of the time, the, the communication that goes forward then to the Board of Supervisors is, we've played this out completely, and we're happy with it, and we're moving it forward, and we want them to take action. I don't feel we've played it out completely. I feel that there's a lot of, there's been a significant concern of the public over these issues, and I think that to allow the public further opportunity for, for input is important in this subject. So this would be the message that I would be sending to the Board of Supervisors, is that I think that it warrants some further public input, and more of an opportunity to hear some other interests involved in this, and not to slow down agriculture, and not to hurt agriculture, but to integrate the ag interests with the greater, with the other interests of the community. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. You heard some discussion, but we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the issue? Commissioner Cooney?
In an abundance of caution, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from staff, including Mr. Gillette or Ms. Bedrogie. If, if we're missing something that is obvious here, I want to give them the opportunity to present it to us before we vote. However, I, I certainly am prepared to support the motion.
Mr. Gillette?
Mr. Chair and supervisor, Commissioner Cooney, certainly the, it'd be up to you as to what action you take, but as far as telling you how to do your business as, as you describe, but there has been a public process through this, may not be well described, and that will be described to the Board of Supervisors. If you feel that needs to be more, or there hasn't been done correctly, or could, we could always do more, that certainly be, be your prerogative.
Commissioner Boyson?
Yeah, and I, I'm just going, with all due respect, Commissioner Smizer, I am going to have to vote against this, and, and only because, as Mr. Gillette has mentioned, and I think Ms. Bedrogie would probably support, this has been through a complete environmental review. There has been public notice of the environmental document. I, I believe it was a complete EIR. It was a formal environmental impact report was done on this. Normally, this would be something that would go from the Agricultural Preserve Advisory Committee directly to the board. As a courtesy, I think it was brought to the Planning Commission. Perhaps the recommendation, as I say, should be made, that, that we were brought into the loop with future recommendations, but in, in this case, I, I just, I, I feel that, that we are just putting another bump in the road that just doesn't need to be there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smizer, did you have one final comment?
No, Mr. Chair. I think I'm just ready for a vote.
All right. This is interesting. Before we call the vote, what we're asking is that possibly this needs further review. We're making a recommendation, but it possibly needs further review. Rather than show a difference on the Planning Commission, I'd like to recommend, unless the maker of the motion says to go forward, I'd like to recommend that an informal, after the report is made, that an informal comment be made to the Board of Supervisors, that it, it would appear to be in the best interest of the community at large to hold more public hearings on this. And with that, do you want to go forward with the vote, Commissioner Smizer?
Mr. Chair, I think the vote actually demonstrates that the commission, as, that if it passes, that a majority of the commission would want it to go. And I, I respect your, I respect your suggestion, and I think it's a fine one, but I think at this point, I, I'm just gonna go ahead with the, with the vote.
All right. Ms., Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Chair, this is an important vote. I appreciate your tolerance. I, I just want to make my position clear. I am not saying anything at all about the substance of the rules. And we have had an opportunity, Mr. Gillette, you've been here at least twice that I can remember. The public's commented, we've had full hearings. Perhaps it wasn't our call legally as to whether they were right or wrong, but we've had an opportunity to know about them. I'm supporting this motion because I think anytime a significant portion of the public comes in and says, "We haven't had enough time to consider all the ramifications," we ought to err on the side of more process rather than less. So that's, that's my sole issue here, and I, I hope the board agrees. They may not, it's their prerogative to disregard our recommendation. I don't think any of us here is, is really saying the rules haven't been thoroughly vetted. What we're saying is, there needs to be more, particularly in light of our recent awareness of how much is going on with respect to our ag lands.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I would just second that. As the maker of the motion, this has nothing to do with the adequacy of the process up to this point. It really goes to what Mr., what Commissioner Cooney just spoke to.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Contraz, would you call the, oh, Mr. McGinnis, did you want to make a comment?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair, and that is, is that the, in the recent past, the Board of Supervisors were faced with a similar situation as it related to the San Ynez Community Plan. And in fact, they did form their own subcommittee, held a community meeting, we had over 150 people show up for that, I believe it was very constructive, and the board members, two of the board members themselves, heard, received the testimony through their ad hoc committee in that public meeting, and were able to bring it back to the board for their consideration. So with that, in that regard, I think it's in the spirit of what the, your members are talking about, which is giving the public additional opportunity to provide public input. I know Commissioner Boyson mentioned leaving it to the discretion of the board as to what forum they might deem appropriate for receiving the additional public testimony. So perhaps if the language or the recommendation of the board was structured similar to allow for their discretion, to communicate very clearly to them that you have heard additional testimony, there appears to be more interest on behalf of the public for the opportunity to provide input on the rules themselves, and that you would encourage them to provide a forum to receive additional, that additional testimony. Perhaps that would provide them with the opportunity, your input and what you've seen here today, and the opportunity to, to deem the appropriate forum for that.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Baker, would you like to comment on that?
I just want to make sure that what the motion is, and I wrote it down, Commissioner Smizer said that the board, recommended the board that they return the uniform rules to the Planning Commission for further review in public sessions.
Workshops?
Is that, well, okay, public arenas.
That is correct.
That's what the motion was, as I wrote it down. I just want to make sure that that's what...
That still is the motion, yes. All right, any further discussion? All right.
Mr. Chair, I, I do appreciate Mr. McGinnis's suggestion, and this would in no way be limiting, I mean, it's a recommendation, if the Board of Supervisors decides that they would prefer to hold, that, that if the Board of Supervisors would agree that further community input would be helpful, ultimately, they're going to be the ones to decide whether it's in the Board of Supervisors' chambers or back here at the Planning Commission. I think what this signals is that this body would be willing, if, if this passes, that this body would be willing to serve as that forum. And we can't, I can't speak for the Board of Supervisors, so I can't say, it'd be difficult for me to make a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors hold these hearings, but it's not that difficult for me to make a recommendation that the Planning Commission hold the hearings. So as to the, the number, and the quantity, and the place, and who, who holds it, you know, my, my only recommendation would be that it be sufficient to hear all the public comment that is out there, and to discuss it completely. But I, I think I'm going to just leave the motion as it is, and I, I do appreciate the sentiment with which it was made, and, and you're absolutely right, the board may just determine otherwise, that they want to hold in some other fashion. But thank you.
Mr. McGinnis or Mr. Baker, I have a question. By, if this was to be granted by the Board of Supervisors, is there going to be any sanctions or any problems with some document that's due if this is delayed another month or two for meetings? This is just, we're a housekeeping problem, that we're just moving on with normal progression of documentation. Mr. Gillette?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. There wouldn't be any, we're under no deadlines as far as any state sanctions or anything.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Contraz, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Boyson?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries four one.
Thank you. All right, Planning Commission will take a short break, needed a break, to set up for the next item. Our next item is, we're gonna skip, we're gonna go down to the old number two, the Capone appeal, because it's due for a drop, I think. Ms., Ms. Contraz, could you please read that into the record?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on request of Peter Capone, appellant, to consider the appeal 04APL7, appeal filed on March 24, 2004, of the Planning Development Department's decision to approve coastal development permit case number 03CDP48.
All right, any ex parte or special site visits by anybody? All right, if not, we'll go to the, this is, we'll go to the applicant, or the staff, Ms. Tina Ryder?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is a really simple item. This item's been on your agenda a number of times, as you can see, in July, August, and October, and I don't believe the parties have still fully resolved the appeal, although they seem to be very close. So we're recommending that you just drop this from your agenda, and if we need to bring this back to the Planning Commission, then we'll renotice it and, and get it back before you, but we're hoping that you won't need to see it again.
All right, I have a request to speak by Mr. Fox, so I'll open the public, uh, Mr. Fox.
I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner Valencia, Chairman, and members of the commission. I support the staff's recommendation and thank them for the work they've put in on this project. It's true, we haven't been able to get all the bundles of property rights sorted out between the parties, there are four people, and it's proven to be complicated, but we want to thank you for the effort you've put into it and staff time to date, but we do support the recommendation.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Fox. All right, with that, we'll bring it back. Any further comment, Ms. Black?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, this is a, this is a first district item. Commissioner Cooney?
I will move, Mr. Chair, that we accept staff's recommendation to drop this Capone appeal from the agenda at this time.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyson. All right, with that, Ms. Contraz, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
All right. And the next item will be the Garnett Commercial Horse Training Board Training Facility. Ms. Contreras, would you read that into the record, please?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on request of James Gurnert owner to consider case number 06CUP19, application filed on April 12, 2006, and to accept the exemption pursuant to section 15301 of the state guidelines for the implementation of CEQA.
Thank you. Any further ex parte or site visits? Seeing none, okay, we'll go on. Do we have Ms. Ingram or Mr. Carmitos here?
Good morning, Chairman Valencia. This is Ms. Ingram up in North County.
All right.
And I have a very brief presentation for you this morning. Before you, you should have two memos, one dated November 13th, which outlines the site visit and an accurate project description as requested by the commission earlier, and the other one dated November 28th that covers proposed additional conditions for the Gurnert facility. I believe Dr. Gurnert is supposed, is in Santa Barbara today. So if you have any questions, he can be directed to him there. And then I would like to go to my presentation, which, as I said, would be very brief. The, this item was continued from the September 1st commission meeting in order for several questions that the commission had to be researched further by staff. I conducted a site visit on October 13th, at which I spoke with Dr. Gurnert at length, and we discussed some of the primary concerns of the neighbors and the commission, which included dust suppression and events at the site. And I would like to say that I provided an accurate project description on page two of the November 13th memo that talks about the number of horses, which are allowable number on this site, 22. The layout of the facility I found to be very adequate, uses pasture buffers in the area and is consistent with other facilities in the area. The one, one of the primary issues that the neighbors had was dust suppression. Dr. Gurnert and I spoke at length about this, and he has since taken a very proactive approach to answering the problem and has contacted an agent who uses acrylic polymer solution that will be used on the driveway. I would like to add that during my site visit, dust suppression in the arenas and the work areas, even the turnout area that's on the northern boundary of the property, did not appear to be a problem. The driveway, the arenas, the turnout area, everything was really well-watered, and there was no dust, and I was on site for almost two hours. There are, were two areas of concern. One is the home that's located in the northeast corner of the property, which is approximately 40 feet from the property boundary. The Gurnerts have, there was some conflict there between dogs and horses and riders. And the Gurnerts are currently in the process of installing a vineyard in, I'm sorry, an orchard in that area, and that no horses are going to be housed or exercised in that area in the future. The other primary concern was the events. And Dr. Gurnert and I talked at length about these events, and possibly a good solution to this would be to change the project description to more accurately describe the type of events that he plans on holding. And that description appears in paragraph seven on page three of the November 13th memo. And that would be that the events are limited to one-on-one riding clinics, which do not require more than two or three trucks and trailers to be parked on the track area at a given time. The loudspeakers are used for communication only between the instructor and rider and are directed inward towards the dressage arena and not at any time pointed outward. So therefore, we should probably, there should be some changes made to the project description for that. Also, Dr. Gurnert has done some research into waste disposal for the manure on his facility and has talked with county experts about this and will be, he has already submitted to me a dust suppression and waste disposal plan. But in the memo dated November 28th, we have, I have five proposed additional conditions for your review. One, number one, would include a parking plan for the events. The Gurnerts currently had already held one event. They had a parking plan. They had a parking attendant who directed parking. It was very organized, and, but we would like to see that written down and submitted. The waste management plan, he has submitted to me already a brief description of what they would like to do. Dust suppression, he has also already submitted to me. During my site visit, we discussed an emergency preparedness plan, which we have requested on other facilities in the past, and would be particularly applicable here because it's in a high fire area on an interior lot. Dr. Gurnert had no problem with this at all and felt that the records they already kept would probably suffice for most of that. The fifth proposed additional condition would be for a monetary report. And I would like to, staff would like to recommend that this condition not be included since Dr. Gurnert has taken such a proactive approach to dealing with all the, all the questions that the commission and possible problems that had come up. And with that, I'd like to turn it over for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
Some questions.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ingram, a question for you concerning the, let me get it to my, in, about composting, about the manure. In the Public Health Department's Guidelines for Management of Animal Waste, it's indicated that composting is not generally recommended as a manure management method. And in the staff report, it indicated that Dr. Gurnert was planning to do such, do some sort of composting. Are we, that was on page two of the November 13th staff report, second paragraph from the bottom. And I was just wondering, are we at cross purposes here from what EHS says compared to what Dr. Gurnert wants to do with composting?
Chairman Valencia, Commissioner Brown, I don't believe so. Composting as such is different than just manure storage. And what Dr. Gurnert proposes to do is to store the manure for a year and then spread it on the pastures, which is recognized agricultural process, rather than putting green manure on pastures, which can cause damage. And he has discussed this at length with the county biologist.
Right. Well, I was just in, on page two of EHS's letter, 5C, it says composting is not generally recommended as a manure management method. Now, I realize what Dr. Gurnert probably wants to do is something that is different than what is EHS's thinking. But I just want to make sure that we're clear here so that there's not any problem for him or should...
Chairman Valencia, Commissioner Brown, I would suggest that we just remove the word compost.
Okay.
Because then that would, that would eliminate that confusion.
Okay. And is there something in the conditions of approval that deal with that? I'm just trying to...
The conditions of approval just call for a waste management plan.
Right. Okay, so that's fine.
But what I would like to suggest is that paragraph five of the November 13th memo be inserted into the original project description where it talks about manure disposal. And I can remove the mention of compost and...
Shelley, would you tell me where you're on the November 13th memo, number five?
On the November 13th memo, on page two.
Right.
Exactly where you're referring to.
Oh, okay, okay.
Current manure disposal.
Okay, so you're just going to remove it from there. That's fine. Okay, thank you.
And what I, what I would like to do is, in the original staff report, it just says manure would be spread onto pastures.
Right.
And I would like to change that to say storing and then spread.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. With, Commissioner Cooney?
Ms. Ingram, with regard to your last suggestion to drop the requirement for self-reporting, I understand the reason you're suggesting it to be that Dr. Gurnert has taken such a laudable interest in trying to resolve these problems that it doesn't appear now to staff that it may be necessary. I just have a concern based on our prior hearing on this matter, that the neighbors who expressed concern about the project were counting on this condition being a part of the permit. And as a result, you know, have at least tacitly withdrawn any opposition to it. What I'd like to suggest we do instead of dropping it altogether, and I appreciate your comment on this, is whether we continue the condition of self-reporting for a period of time. But assuming staff has no issues after that time, it would be a self-terminating provision. So let's say we do it for six months or until July 1. I'm not sure how often you wanted these reports. This says January, March, but that would be two reports. If at the end of that time, staff believes that it's not necessary, it would drop. If it was to be extended, you'd probably have to come back to the commission to extend it.
Chairman Valencia, excuse me, Commissioner Cooney, I apologize for that. I was not the planner when the item first was heard by the commission, and I did not know that that was one of the primary concerns of the neighbors was a monitoring report. I don't think that Dr. Gurnert would have a problem with it, and I certainly see your logic. We had, in previous cases, done monthly reports, the, just on the three, three-month format that I had enclosed. So two of those would be six months.
All right, thank you very much for that. At this time, we'll have the applicant come before us.
Mr. Chair, if I may add one more.
Yes.
Item as a recommendation for insertion to the conditions. It's been a usual practice to take the project description as it comes forward in the staff report and to then insert it essentially verbatim as condition number one. What that does is leave the project description stated conditionally in a conditional tense. And although it's very unlikely that there'd be any confusion in enforcement and interpretation of it, we think it's preferable to either change the tense or to simply cure it, in this case, by a simple insertion. So I'd propose the following insertion to the beginning of condition one or the end. The conditional tense parentheses, such as the use of the word, quote, "would," end quote, in parentheses, in this condition number one, shall be interpreted as imperative parentheses, for example, shall, period, end parentheses.
Okay, well noted. Any questions on that? None? Dr. Gurnert?
Thank you, Chairman Valencia. Commissioners and staff, and Shelley, thanks for the opportunity of getting to say something. I'm certainly willing to comply with anything that the Board recommends whenever I get the final report. But I would like to give you a little bit of background information about, first of all, the neighbors complained about dust. My property's flag-shaped with an 800-foot drive. I think, Commissioner Valencia, you mentioned that you were there.
Yeah.
We talked about the dust. The neighbor, Wanda Weir, who was here at the first hearing, has a driveway that's parallel and also is, happens to be my easement, and also the Kevin Archer property has an easement on that also. Now, I don't want to mention discrimination because that's a buzzword.
Right.
But, you know, I'm willing to do whatever dust suppression we want to on my 800-foot drive, but Wanda Weir's drive and the one that's also used by the Kevin Archer family is longer and just is exactly alongside mine. So I'll be responsible for what happens on my driveway, but not what happens on theirs. So I hope you're not discriminating against me.
Absolutely not.
Also, now, as Shelley Ingram mentioned, I did spend quite a bit of time making phone calls. And for the record, I talked with Harriet Heath, who has been a very helpful ag biologist for the county, in, and I have her address and phone number on the record, I guess, that perhaps Shelley incorporated that. And also with the UC Cooperative Extension about composting, and I jotted down everything that they said. So I can understand, Commissioner Brown, your confusion on this, because I now am confused, where I wasn't after I talked to these people who I thought were authorities on composting.
Well, I think it's just this letter from EHS that has this one word.
Right, exactly.
And you've gone beyond that. And I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a conflict between what they're thinking and what you're set out to do.
Well, there is.
Oh, okay.
And it's in my mind right now, since I saw that. This is the first that I'd seen, the environmental health. So I don't know where we are in that, but I hope for the, your final report will give me some guidelines for that, and then I can be in compliance with whatever your recommendations are. Are there any other, any questions?
No, no other questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And I would like to...
Thank you.
Thank Shelley Ingram for her expertise. She's very helpful.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item? Commissioner Boyson, is there anything in the box there? No? Is there anybody in Santa Maria? No?
No, sir, there isn't.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to staff. Ms., well...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just make a comment regarding the animal waste management plan. What Shelley provided to you in the memo of November 13th is not a condition letter. It's the guidelines for an animal waste management plan. What you have in your conditions of approval, and those are attached, at least in part, to your September 19th staff report, is a departmental condition letter, which, a list of departmental condition letters, which includes the Environmental Health Service letter dated August 25th. And that's attached, attached to the staff report. And that requires that the Public Health Department, Environmental Health Services Division, review and approve the animal waste management plan. So the details of that plan, I think, will be worked out in compliance with this condition. So if there is a potential conflict, it'll be resolved through implementation of this condition.
All right. Thank you very much for that. We'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. This is a third district item. Commissioner Smizer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to see if I can cobble together the pieces here. I have, I may have a question as I'm framing this motion. A couple of questions, actually. The, the monitoring report that is submitted to Planning and Development, I'm wondering, short of a complaint, this is just going to be a report that's filed, and if there's a complaint, then the reports will be pulled out and they'll be used to review with the complaint that, that is lodged about the facility. So are we saying that, that we are going to just follow this exactly? Are we saying that we're going to, that you're recommending that we do it on a quarterly basis rather than a monthly basis as stated here? I guess I'm asking the planner.
Chairman Valencia, Commissioner Smizer, a quarterly basis is sufficient, if you feel that's sufficient.
Okay. I think it is sufficient. If the, if the neighbors come in with a complaint, then before that quarterly report is filed, then Mr. Gurnert will have to address those issues. I think that your format here was a very good one. And it's probably not a bad idea, anyway. This is the kind of thing that would, would be helpful to be hanging up in a barn and having them going over, anyway. So my motion, and I see Mr. Gurnert nodding in agreement, so I think he has agreement for that as well. I want to thank the applicant for the way that he has approached this project. I want to thank staff for the way that they have worked with the applicant and obviously developed a good working relationship. And that's, that's really what we're after, is the community be pleased and happy and everybody working together on these, on these land use issues and to accomplish the dreams and concerns of the, of the landowner as well. So I'm going to ask that the motion would be that we... So, I'm going to ask that the motion would be that we adopt the required findings, the notice of exemption from provisions of SEQA, as Incorporated Attachment B, and that we approve the conditional use permit, 06CUP000-00019, subject to the conditions of approval incorporated in Attachment C, and all of the other staff changes as recorded in this hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just make, highlight two issues. One is, I'm assuming that county council's change is incorporated in there.
I'm including him as staff.
Yeah. And, just a really minor point, but I don't think the signature page, on page C5, is correct. It says, it would be signed by Zoraida Abresh on behalf of, half of the director, but it's actually the Planning Commission Secretary, on behalf of the Planning Commission, so we just make that minor changes.
All right.
So noted and included in the motion.
All right, and with that, Ms. Contreras, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Garnett, Dr. Garnett. Thank you very much.
And thank Ms. Ingram, again.
For being so patient.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. All right, with that, the Planning Commission has completed its work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do actually believe we need to read the Isla Vista Master Plan into the record and formally drop it.
All right.
If that'd be appropriate.
All right. Ms. Contreras, would you read the...
Are we reading the whole thing into the record?
Two weeks. Item number four, would you please read that into the record?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on the quest of county executive office to receive and review the Isla Vista Master Plan. At a future meeting, make necessary findings and forward recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding adoption of the Isla Vista Master Plan, VEAR, and associated Isla Vista specific changes to the County Comprehensive Plan, Gleaned Community Plan, Coastal Zoning Ordinance, and the Isla Vista Project Area Redevelopment Plan.
This is your district. All right, this is a third district item. Commissioner Smizer?
Excuse me, I move the staff recommendation.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Ms. Contreras, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
All right, and with that, the Planning Commission has completed its work. Thank you very much for watching.